Welcome, everyone. I'll call this special meeting to order in council chambers at 6:00 P. M. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I do not have an invocation, but I will just ask you to turn your attention to the lovely person behind Janine. Kimberly Manning is our new clerk, so if we could welcome her. If you haven't met yet, please make sure to chat backwards. And also, Janine, we are very thankful for your presence here at the desk one last time.
Thank you.
So, thank you. We do not have any remote electronic attendance, so we'll move to roll call, please.
Alderson Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Okay. If there are no questions on the agenda, I did just want to say that my PowerPoint that we're starting with today will be added to the minutes, of course. I didn't, was not able to get that out ahead of time, but it'll make sense with all of this amazing information that you're going to be sent home to crunch in your mind for decision-making time sometime in the future. Is there any public comment this evening? I don't think so, just our friends from Renew in the audience. So, we'll move right away to a roundtable discussion. You'll have to forgive me if I get a little academic with these titles in the presentation. This is what I do. But as I mentioned in my email, there's just been a lot of information that I'm crunching, connecting points of data, situations, et cetera, information from conferences, and there was not enough time to share all that with you at this critical time of forming this council with these actors and getting into deep conversation about where we spend quite a bit of our budget in the CIP, which we'll be talking about tomorrow. And I, there would be no time to add that to a miscellaneous, so I very much appreciate your time tonight. So, when I say revision, that's because this isn't final yet, our strategic plan, right? We have time to continue to refine, and my experience is the more you refine, the better product you get. And the revisioning does not mean, the second word there, does not really mean throwing everything out, right, and starting over. It's just maybe retooling our vision just a little bit, maybe clarifying a few things based on what we've already talked about at strategic planning and what we can, we'll continue to talk about as some big projects come our way. So, if you turn to the next page, why are we doing this? Because, as I mentioned, we want to get the best product, which will be our adopted strategic plan update. We want to continue to simplify the strategic plan, right? We've done a good job of knocking things off of that, very long list of projects, but we want to simplify and clarify it, and I do believe it's part of the onboarding process. So, what you see on the right-hand side, some of you might recognize the layout here of a graphic that I had Macy help, oh, what?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
This one?
The right button, please.
Oh, the right button. There we go, thank you. So, this graphic is very similar to the one I handed out two years ago, where after we had done our strategic planning and talking with the community, et cetera, and we had our three pillars, as the time went on, I added my own mayoral pillars, where I'm looking at creating opportunities and connection within the city. We've also talked recently about roads being a major part of our focus, housing, the comprehensive housing update that was presented in March, and continue to talk about, and then any kind of environmental impact we can have, looking at our carbon footprint, all of those kinds of things. I've included those around these pillars. And then what I thought was very interesting to show, when we look at how our budget gets impacted by growth, right, is those outer rings of like the tree stump, right? So, in 2020, you can imagine that in 2021, growth was impacted by the COVID pandemic. So, we went from 1.8% down to 0.36, barely any growth in 2021. But in 2022, we started stabilizing the organization, et cetera, and now we're at 4.88% growth. We also had a TIF come off and all of those things, but that's the trend we want to go into. And I chose this color scheme just because I want us to think about how this solidifies our position economically, right? The darker we go, the more solid our foundation is becoming. So, hopefully, that's a helpful graphic. I also want us to think about this philosophy at the top I was introduced to at the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Think exponentially, act incrementally. I really think that if we have a vision for the city that folks in the community have talked with us about, we've talked with them about, we need to keep feeding the vision even as we have to act in much smaller bites, right, to get that vision to become a reality. And so, that, that is sort of an underlying thought process I hope is meaningful for you all. And as I started to look at this draft strategic plan, as I started connecting dots of information, my brain decided to look at what we have to accomplish and maybe what we want to accomplish, and then reminding ourselves what's guiding us, right? So, I think we've talked, as I mentioned, about infrastructure, the comprehensive housing program. I've added in there employment quality and economic mobility, and I'll explain that in a few minutes, and I've added in there environmental impacts, because as we've seen, you know, our economy was impacted regionally when the Mississippi River started drying up this last summer, and the cruise ships could not dock, right? They were totally stopped, so we missed all of that, those tourism dollars, when that happened. There's other things that, that, it's such a broad category, things that we can do to make a small difference in our own part of the world, and we might want to be talking about that. On wanting to, some of these stem from some of the new, if you look at your new initiatives under some of these items in the strategic plan, you'll see those bullet points, some of those are there, like the prairie parks on page five, right? The fire station, we can argue that it's a have-to versus a wants-to. We do, we are currently working in one of those places, so I moved it to this category. Food security policy and plan, and the mental health services access, I've added that in there because I have a working group already going on there with Mr. Timian and Chief, and we know that impacts safety in the community, so they're all sort of like related, what good things to think about. Will we have the money to put behind any initiatives? Well, we might have to see, but I included those, and I probably have missed some from this draft strategic plan, but you understand what those columns are for, right? And then, underlying beliefs, I know I'm operating from a place of wanting to maintain or decrease the tax burden on our residents. I'm also operating from a place where believing that cost containment also equals cost savings. I think, Mr. Schmidt, last week, you, you pointed that out with the purchase of that remote mower, right? We substituted something out instead of just added another thing to buy to help us contain costs, but still be effective. We als, I also believe we should try to limit the impact of our budget on our service provision, right? We've already experienced in the past, you know, if we don't have the staff to do the work we say we're going to do for residents, then that doesn't deliver service to the residents, so I think that's important to keep in mind. You all already have the council pillars and mayoral pillars in front of you, and then I just wanted to remind us of the core values that we developed two years ago, which I think these are the kinds of things that will get looked at at a turnover of a new mayor and all of those kinds of things, so. But what I noticed here, innovation, adaptability, and resiliency, we talk about finding innovative solutions in the delivery of services, formulation of policies, and development activities. And we will promote a forward-thinking environment that supports creativity and continuous improvement. And I think that is just important for us to remember, that we, we did at one point have, some of us have a discussion about that resiliency moving forward. So, I don't want us to lose sight of core values either that have been articulated to the public. And I will leave time for comments. I've reminded you all, I wanted you all, make sure you speak, don't be, don't be shy about speaking tonight. So, to dig deep into what, what points of information I've been spinning around in my head that I think we all need to think about as a group. Under infrastructure, we got the PCI index this winter. If you want to go to that particular link, the last page, if you can scroll down for us, maybe some of you have read up on this, if you scroll down, the city should do X, Y, and Z. Okay, that's far enough. Actually, go back up there. Yeah, if you look at the comments, the city should strive to maintain or better its current condition of our road network if possible. And this is what, something I've been talking with you about, is if we just maintain it, our scores go down, we don't, we're not actually gaining any ground on the quality of our road infrastructure, but if we put more money toward it, we might be able to take a crack at it. And if you, going up farther, there was the dollar amount somewhere. Maybe not.
Might be lower.
No, but the, the rest is, ah, here, yeah, if you go up a little far, there we go. You see this five-year post-rehab PCI of 61 and a backlog of approximately 19%. These models demonstrate that a budget that falls below 5.86, and right now, we are at 4.9, steady-state PCI model, will result in an overall PCI decrease over the course of five years. So, we really have the evidence that we need to put a lot of money toward roads if we're going to make a dent for the community. And I, and I'm sure we all have stories from constituents about roads and what, how it impacts them, happy to hear those as we, when we come back to conversation. But, you know, recently, I had someone call about a place in the first ward that really needs it, and they thought that it really meant that if we took care of the road, then other things would follow, right? The quality of the buildings being rehabbed around there, all that kind of stuff. So, I thought that was a wonderful perspective from a resident. It wasn't just about being better to drive on, it was about then what else people would invest in the place because they see things being taken care of, so. Okay, so can we go back to the PowerPoint? Thank you. Something that really stuck out to me was, oh, yeah, the March 2023, 23 Housing Program Roundtable Presentation. If you go to that, that link, we noted, I think it was $600,000 a year, somewhere towards that, and it's at the very end. Again, everything's at the end of these PowerPoints. There we go, go back up there, right there. The pathway to meaningful change, I thought this was really helpful to remind ourselves, right? Retain a program manager, a minimum of four inspectors. This report talks about comparisons to other cities and of, of our size and what's needed. Dedicated funding to sustain the program, a team approach, right? It's not just one department. Building in the linkages to our, to our partners at Moline Community Development Corporation, the Moline Housing Authority, and our land bank and Habitat. Exploring public-private partnerships and explore, exploring federal and state grant opportunities. If you want to, so just a reminder of the fact that we have advice from staff on how to make a difference with housing. Do you want to scroll down one more? Keep going? Keep going? No, I guess it was further up. Sorry. I'm looking, there we go, is that the dollars? Nope. In any case, this will be attached in the minutes, and I can forward it certainly to you, so you can have a quick access to this report. That's okay, we can leave it. But the idea was it's over $600,000, right? Or $600,000.
Somewhere between $500,000 to $600,000 estimated.
Okay. One of the programs that I learned about in U.S. Conference of Mayors, you see Hartford, Connecticut Rental Licensing. Rental Licensing is something that's been brought up on the council floor over the past year or so. They mentioned it as the method they've used to hold landlords accountable or to at least make life better for residents if the landlords aren't doing their job. So, they have a licensing program where some of the fees that are derived from it are used to put into a pool of money that then can be used for residents, like the city steps in and is like, okay, we're going to help get X done at your house because your landlord isn't doing stuff, but of course, it jeopardizes the licensure of the landlord down the road. So, I did ask some questions about what were, what were the stumbling blocks for you as you've implemented this program? It's still in, it's a phased-in approach in Hartford. And of course, they, they said having the staff, right? Having those four inspectors, that's, that's the key. And they have things on a rotating schedule as well. There's, that is a link to a news story about the article, but I did find the actual notice to landlords about the rental license program going into effect, and I've had a few preliminary conversations with Brad Hellman and Drake Daly, just to say like, hey, what do you think about this program? Have you heard of anything like this? What are we doing with landlords and properties? How are we grading them? That kind of thing. So, I'm sure you can ask them questions as well, but as we get to a point where we adopt a strategic plan, and if it continues to include the comprehensive housing program updates, I think there are some interesting examples out there of cities that are trying to be innovative to meet resident needs and not, not, not just go after the landlords, right, that aren't doing the right things, but they're also providing a service if, if they have the funds to do that, so I just wanted to point that out. And then finally, this little chart I have up there under, it's related to this item number, employment quality and economic mobility. This has risen to the fore for me because KJ Whitley sent this out, the new HUD guidelines, and I took a look at that, family of four, right, and the low income limit at 80%. And so, you can be a family of four making $70,000, $700, and qualify for HUD benefits. And to me, that just sounded like such a large number, right, that I would know more and more people for whom, if they lost their spouse and they had three children, they'd be awfully close or already qualifying for this, right? It makes even more of an impact on my mind when I read, if you were to click at the bottom bar there, which you can't do since it's an image, but if you click on that, I don't know if any of you did, the, the median income is $88,000. It's not very far from our qualifying for low-income benefits. So, it tells me that we either have wage compression, or we need to, to see how we can work with CED to make, and the school district, to make sure we have jobs that pay well enough and that we have people, students, young people, residents going into those professions. We know we need paramedics, right? We know we need firefighters, police, et cetera, et cetera. And we know our local hospitals are importing workers from other countries and communities. They're using a lot of traveling nurses and doctors, and those are, those are professions we should be able to support here with our residents and therefore continue to increase the opportunities for economic mobility. So, I'm very concerned about our labor market and, and how we prepare people for that and what it means for our economy as a whole in Moline. So, that's my take on have-tos at the moment. Want me to keep going, or you want to weigh in on anything right now? All right, I'll keep going. It won't be too much longer. You want to go to the next slide, please? Oh, I have to do it. Jeez Louise, okay. Sorry, this is also related to, this was information from U.S. Conference of Mayors from S&amp;P Global and Index, and I have the full report here if you all want to look at everything, and I know it's tiny on the screen. But I had said in my, some of my first meetings with folks at IDOT and Downstate about the train, my, my pitch was development can't stop at Rockford and Peoria and Bloomington, in the center of the state, right? It just can't. We have a large area out here, and that's what the train is supposed to help. And what the picture on the left confirms for me, if you notice, in the middle of Illinois, there's dark, dark in shading, right, and toward the top, and of course, some of that is Chicagoland. And that's the percentage of employment growth for 2022, and it's the highest levels there on the legend. I circled where we are in the Quad Cities, look at that, .1 to 2.9, very little employment growth, right? Same thing here, as you get to 2023, you see that Peoria area is green, I've circled it on the map in blue, but it's, I'm sorry, it's so hard to see. But, which green means, again, second to bottom or bottom largest levels of employment growth in 2023, we're still in the white. And then if I show you what they predict, it's even clearer. We're in the red there, where I've circled it, and you see tiny little dots I've put on the sort of Peoria, Bloomington area where they're in blue. They've already returned to peak employment, and we won't return to peak employment until 2030 or later. That bothers me, right? And I don't know if we have any power to change that, except to continue to work on the strategic plan initiative that, that has to do with making connections with our local educational institutions, and also to continue to make this a development-friendly community where people want to live and businesses want to set up shops. So, I just thought this was really helpful data from S&amp;P Global to help illuminate some of the things that I've been thinking or observing and that we might need to think about. Then I made a category of things that could be in have-to and want-to, right? I already ment, mentioned some environmental solutions. If you go to the roadmap link, this is a policy guide from a group called Local Progress. It's associated with cows, which is out of, and I forget what that stands for, but it's out of the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and it's related to a program I, I have been a part of called the Mayor's Innovation Project. I've shared this with our environmental working group, and you see there, on the left, it says zero-waste roadmap and sustainable public transportation. We're already doing some of these things with the help of our partners, like at MetroLink, right, where we have EV buses, it's more and more of their fleet, if, if not 100%. But there are some other things that, that we could think about in terms of reducing our carbon footprint. So, there's a lot of helpful links in that policy document. I offer it to you just to read up what the working group has read up on and see if there's anything that makes sense. And just to, so you know that Tony and Andy Parr are, are reading this stuff as well, okay? So, we can go back to the presentation? And then, this draft, if you, I know you have this chart, right? So, that's one way to look at it, if you want to click on the, yeah, CIP Ward Analysis. I really like this version of it, because it's really, really simple, and you can see in the pie chart, the same things you see listed here in these white boxes, right, of which wards have gotten the most investment of dollars. Now, there, that's all, there's always a qualification there, right? Why, why were they invested in at that point in time? Maybe there was a major burst, you know, pipe burst, or maybe there were some extenuating circumstances. This isn't to say that some ward doesn't deserve more, but it does point out, if you look at that blue, the dark, the bright blue, that's the, one of the smallest pieces of pie, right, the next one, right, that's Ward One. That's also where the, on the PCI index, it shows some of our poorest roads, right? And so, that's when I talked about, when I came back from another conference and talked about an equity plan, this is what I was trying to get at, right? I don't only want to know CIP information, like what, what have we done for the infrastructure for our residents, but where has there been economic development work done the most, right? Where have those dollars, where are our places that are ripe? We already know, like with the childcare plan, we, we have that opportunity corridor on 16th Street. We also use that and Avenue of the Cities for the boost program. So, we know some of these things, but we need to put it in a place where the public and entrepreneurs and others can see, like, where are the opportunities, right? And maybe it can also help guide some of our CIP decision-making, if that makes sense. So, I, I thank Todd Green and Margaret very much for continuing to push the equity plan, data gathering, and then trying to translate it into a form that makes sense for us so we can make policy decisions. So, we can go back to the presentation? And that's me. All right. Then I was introduced to one more way of looking at how we make decisions. There is a company, and this is a no way, I'm, I'm not advocating for buying this policy package, but I thought it was a very interesting way to look at how we make policy decisions. There's a group called City Health, and I do think we have that link, that's the health lens link there. Yeah, there you go. Right there, you can just leave it there. So, you can check out this website, site, they do everything, they, they put a health lens on all sorts of parts of the decision-making. So, we have affordable housing trust, complete streets, green spaces, healthy food purchasing, safer alcohol sales, healthy rental housing, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to offer that, you know, I thought about our conversations around bike lanes on 12th Avenue, right? Would it be a different story if people understood the health impacts of having bike lanes as opposed to just convenience, or as opposed to just this is modern planning as an argument? There's all kinds of things. I, I told you last week that I'm looking at potential tobacco license limits, same thing, there's a health lens to that. Why else, I don't want to make limits just to stop business. I, I'm looking at limits for what's healthy for our community, how much is enough, right? We do that with alcohol, we do that with cannabis, there's a reason we could look at that policy decision with a health lens. Does that make sense? So, I thought this was really interesting, and I put it in there as a, as a, another column or another way to look at things, have-tos, want-tos, oh, and here's this other way we can look at it. You could do that with the environmental lens as well, right? There's, so they kind of go hand in hand. So, we can go back to our presentation. Thank you. So, I listed all of those there, and then, because they can all be looked at that way. But then the last one, this 360 presentation, if we go to the, it's going to be hard to read, don't, I'm just, it's just another point of information. Mayor's Innovation Project brought in an expert, Lori DePere Smith, I think she's from University of Wisconsin. She shared this whole 360 approach to planning that links up 17 goals from the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, and they use, as you can see this book on the left side, health in all policies approach. And this is the kind of thing I would share with Bob and CED and say, you know, like, what do you think about this as you're putting a comprehensive plan together, right? This isn't something we all have to have our minds completely wrapped around, but I offer just as yet another example of another way to look at policy planning. Does that make sense? Health in all, what does the title say? Health in all policies approach. So, I leave you with, if these are the cases, right, if this is the information floating out there, then what? We have the budget to grapple with. We need to grapple with all of that revenue expenditures and how we, and how we stick to our core beliefs about budget impact and service provision. So, with that said, I would really like, I think it's a good exercise, too, for us to, you know, for you to offer some thoughts, agreements, disagreements, anything, it's wide open before I turn things over to Karen.
I got a question about the full employment. What is that based on? I mean, when you say by 2030, we'll get back to full employment, that's based on filling the open jobs that are available now?
I believe it is literally just unemployment rates, so whether it's open now versus, let me look in here real quickly.
Because one of our big employers is the hospitals, I imagine that's pretty fluid with hiring nurses and doctors.
I mean, they have openings all the time.
All the time.
Right, and that's why they're bringing in folks from other Right, and that's why they're bringing in folks from other communities to staff the place.
Right.
Right, which jacks up the cost.
But by 2030, will that have changed? Probably not.
I think the projection is it's, it's going to take longer for, for economies that might be slower in growth to catch up to where they once were, to, or to the peak employment. So, yeah, this is just, I can pass this around, or you can take another look, look to see all the detailed information about, um, metro economies is what it was. And I just thought it was helpful that you could see even to the Quad Cities where the growth was not happening as much. Other thoughts? I talked for how many minutes? Oh, Lordy, 25, yes. Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, um. I think that there is, I think we definitely need to begin to work on how we expand our infrastructure planning and expanding our budget of what we put there. Um, I also think as we move that forward, I want us to get to that eight million or the amount necessary to keep moving that needle. But I think that, um, maybe we get to seven and a half. Right, I, I think, looking at the, to me, the, what's it, five point?
Yeah, it's five point six is what they say we, to just bare minimum.
Which to me, that becomes the like, must get to that number, absolutely. But I do think we should go beyond that. And I think that, um, knowing that we can, and I think our goal should be that in longer-term years, that eight million and growing, because it will grow every year, will need to become our target goal. But also just realizing, without the desire to cut back too much on the available services now, that we may not be able to get to eight right now.
Which would speak to the act incrementally piece of what we might want to do.
But definitely wanting to increase, absolutely.
Okay. Anyone? Thoughts?
Getting back to full employment.
Yep.
And I don't even, this probably isn't the place to talk about it. Do we have, because I know with, there's certain parts of town, I'm going to name names here, where we talked about having money in the budget to purchase properties away from certain entities that are sitting on large, large chunks of property that aren't doing anything with it. And they might even already have a TIF.
They might, they just might.
Hint, hint, hint. Would there be, I guess I'm asking the council, this is a general thing, and Bob, what you think of maybe putting money aside to purchase? And, you know, I don't know, that's going to be a lot of money, but we did spend a lot of money, uh, recently on a property.
You're, you're saying putting money away to purchase property that is like, say, sitting vacant, not getting developed, light and blighted property.
That we could be, we could be making money on.
So in the sense that would connect with the things the land bank is supposed to be doing?
In part, in part.
And M C D C?
In part, not fully.
But you're talking maybe a bigger approach to removing.
Talking about larger commercial properties that are sitting, non-performing commercial properties.
Not performing.
I think that's the way to describe it.
I think I know, there was one south by a park.
Yeah.
Could be.
Huge parking lots, okay.
Ah, okay. That makes sense, um.
They might have spies watching us.
Well, the thing is, what you're really getting at, you know, we can have all kinds of conversations we want with people who, you know, own those properties. We can also come up with incentives to get them to do something, but sometimes not even that moves them. So what else is left?
Yeah, I guess I don't know where that's at, if we even try to talk to them.
Oh, yeah, we have regular meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, but I got to talk about that.
That's fine.
Okay.
I understood, your premise is understood, though. The premise, does everyone understand the premise that like, when there's stuff that's sitting blighted or just sitting and not producing for us, what can we do to gain a little control over what could happen there?
Probably the rest of it needs to be an executive session, yes.
Well, property acquisition definitely is executive session discussion, as is disposal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tim.
Good input.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm, I'm looking at these, um, handouts you're passing, and something that jumps out is that metropolitan areas accounted for 90% of real gross domestic product and additional jobs. So this notion that, and, and we saw this in the map too. Metropolitan communities seem to be gaining the bulk of growth, jobs, economy. So is there a real strategy then to, to beat a dead horse, increased density to make us more of a metropolitan area? That could then spur tax revenue, development, jobs?
Well, that's what, you know, that's what the Chamber and Visit Quad Cities have been talking about forever, is how do we get this, the Quad Cities to be a place that people come to? How do we build up the workforce? That, that has been their goal. So it's, it's not out of the realm of possibility that anything we do to get more people to come to the Quad Cities. And, you know, this is evidenced in the community when they talk about the size that the high school classes used to be, right? And that has shrunk. And so could we be on a pendulum swing the other way in our efforts to improve the economy and improve, and, and help us meet our potential, probably? Did you have a hand, someone over here?
No.
Okay. Anyone else up there, did you have a hand earlier?
Yeah, eight million sounds alluring, right? And yes, if we would like to have good roads, we need to have money. But at the same time, we have to consider the condition of citizens, their earning limit, how much tax they are paying, and that should not be random. And I'd like to say that it should be a very rational way. Thank you.
So you want to make a rational decision on funding roads? Got it.
But I'd like, I, I'd love to see the good road, but at the same time, we have to take into account the city.
Well, I think, I, you know, Carol and Bob walk us through that rational piece, right? They understand any emotional piece with regard to like, we want to fix it all, right?
I'm more emotional, I should say.
No, that's fine, but they'll walk us through, you know, how we could make those rational choices. Yes, Albert?
Thank you. Um, one question, if we, let's say, we do the eight million, we start ramping up the roads. And I know we coordinate with utilities to make sure that we get some of that infrastructure below the ground as they're doing those things. Uh, what kind of implications could that have with like, more, even more spending that we don't anticipate?
No, that is an excellent question, um, that we have talked internally about. And for the first couple of years, because as you recall, um, we were trying to implement fees, potentially fee increases in the water as well as the sewer fund. We had not taken that into consideration for additional roads. So for the first couple, two or three years, we would be paying for the utility portion in addition to the actual road. But then we'd be easing into that through, um, future CIP. But, um, tomorrow night, David's going to be presenting some roads that he is recommending to be replaced based on the PCI. And he tried, I mean, there's a lot of very, very poor roads. So they tried to kind of coordinate the ones that would have the le- the less impact on the utilities under the road, um, with their projections. But right now, if we pushed it up to eight, we would pay for both utilities under the road, including the road, for the first couple, two or three years as we move forward.
Okay.
I could add to that.
Yes, please.
Yeah, just so, just so we're clear, when we talk about adding, uh, below-ground utilities, that's done customarily whenever we do a full-blown reconstruction of a road. When we're doing a resurfacing, that's not typically where you're going to see the underground utilities get replaced. So as you look at the PCI index, it of course did not take into consideration the utilities below ground. That's a separate issue altogether, and, and it's a study in itself in terms of the, the physical condition and the age of the, of the infrastructure. I mean, we have water main breaks daily. I mean, absolutely, several times a week, we get water main breaks. It's because of the age of the infrastructure. But going forward with, with this, uh, plan that David will present tomorrow, I mean, it's really based upon that snapshot in time too. As I was pointing to you earlier, you know, when we, when we had that project done, it was with the understanding that we're going to upgrade that every five years. We're going to have to bring people back to make sure that, one, are we keeping pace? Two, are we advancing that, this agenda with more money? And as a result of that, that work that we're doing, you know, are people noticing the difference? And you're getting fewer and fewer complaints as you go. One of the things we're going to look at, which I thought about two years ago, and we're still trying to get there, is actually doing some of this resurfacing in-house, not road reconstructions, because that's really, you know, beyond the scope or the realm of what our department, Public Works Department will do, our street department in particular. But actually, the road resurfacing, where we go and then we put in the asphalt overlays. Because in other cities that I've managed, we've put those programs in place, we've bought that equipment, because it's not that expensive. And then instead of spending a million dollars on two miles, we spend a million dollars and maybe we get three miles for our money. Because, one, we're cutting down on the profit side, we're not paying a contractor for their profit, we're not paying for profit on manpower, we're not paying for profit on materials. So we start to do some of it in-house, and that they are looking at right now for 2024. So stretching your, your, you know, you can always add more money, but we want to stretch the distance we're traveling to. So we're going to be looking at that as an alternative and having a resurfacing crew, that it's all they do is residential straits that could be resurfaced.
Mr. Schmidt, and Mr. Timmy.
Yeah, so do we have, and this is, I know it's going to sound like one, Carol, but it's not really a question for you, I don't think. Do we have any idea what eight million dollars of roadwork means from a, the underground add-on? Because it seems to me that you answered, no, this eight million dollars, if we got to it, would only account for the roads. And Carol talked about how, how we would push that money away, but then we're not getting to eight million on roads, we're not getting the goal set on the PCI. And I guess, less about that eight, because I care less about that, is when we get to five point seven, what's the real number there when we consider, even on just the total reconstruction, that we have to do sewers on top of that? Because I wouldn't be surprised if five point seven, to actually get to that number in our CIP, is closer to eight.
When you add on the utilities.
Add on the utilities.
Sure, in those cases where there's reconstruction, yes.
Yeah, not all of CIP is reconstruction, is his point.
And I'm curious as, if we know what to get to that five point seven in the roads.
Something you can follow up on?
Yeah, we can follow up on the five point seven, I don't mean to say, because you said it's not necessarily me. But just to maybe get some reassurance out of that four point nine, the utilities are totally separate up to that four point nine, which we're currently doing. But the amount over, we have identified the projects that they're recommending, what those costs are by project. So you'll get to see those tomorrow night, what that cost is.
Right, but when we're considering how we're impacting the PCI, we can't be, can include, though we need to include in the costs, when we consider how it will impact PCI, we can't let those utility costs inflate that. Because we say, we did eight million dollars, well, no, we really did six, or, or whatever it is. I'm, I'm using this example.
Okay. Mr. Timmy.
Uh, one statement, one question, sort of, maybe. Some of these utilities are also lead pipe replacement, which there are federal dollars for.
Correct.
And so that's one advantage, and, and those could be part of the targeting ideas, so we could accomplish that goal as well. But every year that I've been here, we set a goal for CIP, and we never get all the projects done. And so this, this is just the market, and it's bids, and it's all sort of scheduling, it's no one's fault. But is that eight million number accounting for that? Or would we have to aim for 10 in order to expect 20% to fall off?
No. Because if you aim for 10, you'll miss the target even further away. Because at, at five million, we can't, we can't hit the full target. If you go to eight million, you might gain a little bit on the five million, but you're not going to get the full eight, because there's a limitation on supplies, inventory, labor, and contractors. So you can have a $20 million CIP and never hit it.
Right.
Because you just don't have the resources outside of the city to actually do the work, even if you have the money. So it's a question then of how much can we advance that agenda? And part of that is in-house, part of that's in-house. I think that may prove to be a greater solution for those overlays that need to be done on those existing asphalt straits, you know?
Okay, yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I get, and all of those points come together, I get, right? I have sort of been wondering too, with this PCI number, even, even with us expanding that.
Yeah.
Right, could, so it's, we had the four point?
Nine.
Nine, thank you, four point nine currently budgeted, which would have a 1% reduction, but realistically, we're only going to get it to four point five. And so I, I guess I want to understand, as we're going into it, what are we planning for? What is, like, and, and I think it's okay to say, we're going to work on more projects that we know gets done. In order to give ourselves, and I brought this up the other week, of, of, we know we're going to shoot for seven million dollars in projects, but we plan for eight, so if something falls through, there's a chance we could replace it on the schedule, or... But if we just have some projects that are closer to ready a little early.
Shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready, also knowing, of course, if the earlier you were prepared, the longer it's on the shelf, the more likely you would.
Plan goes stale.
Yes.
Plan goes stale.
And so we look for some guidance on what, what we can do to sort of help edge that forward in a way that doesn't just, like you said, make a bigger goal, but we miss by more.
Well, for, for example, if you, if you increase the spending from five million to eight million, you still have to design all of that, right? So when we're doing a resurfacing, that's not a redesign. But when we're doing a road reconstructions, and our engineering department is coming up with the designs for all those roadway improvements and the underground utilities, you know, if you throw another three million on top of that, you might not even have the engineering staff capable to get that all done, and then we have to shop it out at greater expense. So that's another consideration, is do we grow that department a little bit? If necessary, as a part of that, in order to get more shovel-ready projects on the shelf. And then, of course, once you have shovel-ready projects, you can also pursue grant funds. It's very difficult to pursue grant funding if you don't have shovel-ready projects. I mean, that's exactly the situation we have right now with the D CIP grant. And why Rock Island is going to go forward with, with their project, and we're pushing our redecking back a year, is that our plans aren't there yet, right? So in order for us to, to be number one and get the grant, we want to make sure that our plans are done. Their plans have been done for years, they just couldn't find a funding source to do their project, okay? And Davenport is scrambling to try and design projects for that same grant purpose. So it's a moving target.
So hearing maintained interest in the infrastructure, you know, priority. I've heard some questions on employment and economic mobility. Anything, anyone wants to add about housing? You mentioned density.
Is there anything you want to know about housing that we talked about back in March?
Yes, Mr. Timmy.
Do we have an, I mean, how many vacant properties do we have? And by vacant, I don't mean abandoned. I mean, there is a house down the street from me, they mow the lawn, no one lives there. There's a lot of those houses.
There's a lot of those houses.
People can live there.
They could.
Like, do, do we have any thoughts about that, about a way to tackle it?
Well, if they're paying their property tax, I mean, this is a legal question, correct? They're paying their taxes, you don't really have a way to push someone out.
We double their tax.
We double their tax.
So are you talking about the Breitchen Street?
I, I know that that was, I've heard that discussed before, based on utility usage and, and, and the like. And maybe it provides an easy list for people to target, to maybe acquire these houses, or, you know, if we have investors that want to come in, or, or just people looking to buy a house, we could say, here's a list of people that aren't living there. I, I'm, I'm not really sure.
I, I, that's for you, Mr. Stiles.
No, privacy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We'd have to look at that.
There's approximately 100 vacant lots that the city owns, 100. Some of them are buildable, some of them not so much. Some of them are buildable, some of them not so much, because of the size of the property, or because of the topography of the property. But there are those lots that we own. So that's a part of that whole discussion, in terms of the land bank and disposing of, disposing of buildable lots. It's exactly what the same conversation Rock Island is having in the land bank, is can we just dispose of all these lots with the land bank? Let the land bank manage them and sell them and get them built, either through MCDC or, you know, through some other means.
Okay. Anyone else? Oh, yeah. You're going, you have a comment, a question? I suppose we can entertain that, Alex.
Thank you. Alex can realize we're presenting a really, as you know, we're working with MCDC, and we have hammered out a general outline of a neighborhood program. We're trying to get to some of those things that are kind of rental conditions or housing conditions in the neighborhood. And from my, and then I guess another thing, we have recently hired an intern. And one of the things we're going to have the intern do is to use publicly available data to see, and we're just going to start small, draw a little line around an area of concern, and just see if we can tell from their county assessor records whether the taxpayer is going to that location or some other location, which should give some indication of their desire. So I think you can go about this question creatively. I also got my haircut on 16th Street up the road last week. And I was looking across the street, and I was like, how come nobody seems to live in that cute little house? And it's been vacant for 16 and a half years. No one's lived in it. It's starting to fall apart. And so Janelle and I, the MCDC's, I've had a career friend, and I've been talking about creative ways that we could just approach a property owner as they wear your gold for your property. How can we help you get that back into productive use and make it an asset to the neighborhood? It's a lovely little place. Surely it could be a hole or hurt in your heart that it's not, you know, we love by somebody right now. But one of the things that I just wanted to point out to this, then one of the toughest nuts to crack, as I share with everyone, is that people that have vacant properties do not seem to be prone to permanent. And I don't know if it's because, well, here we say this very often, the taxes aren't high enough that it hurts. You know, I'm not sure why, but I can assure you that we spend a lot of time talking about it. Janelle and I are going to try and craft some ways through MCDC and our box direction that we can try to at least address on a small scale in there. You're kind of speaking about incremental approaches to a larger scale problems. Exactly. So I just wanted to tell you that we're thinking about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to, in a sense, report back to you all on where MCDC is at. Janelle's doing an amazing job, and Abdo has joined us on that as the council liaison. I think you've only been at one or two meetings, though, so I won't put you on the spot to speak. But, you know, retooling the goals of what MCDC can do and where it can do it, and they're adding in like homeowner workshops, which I'm really excited about, because we do have a lot of people who haven't been homeowners or haven't rented in the United States before. They need to know how to deal with plumbing issues, or, you know, how to do some of these things on your own, if you can, which helps keeps properties up and all of that stuff. So I'm excited for the direction they're headed. And I think that we should invite Janelle to come and speak about where things are at, at some point. As well as you, Ms. Marsky, if you can get an update from Molling Center. All right, so it sounds to me like, I'm not hearing anybody say like, oh, no, we don't need to look at housing right now. I think these are big dollar amounts that we're looking for staff to help us figure out how it's going to look in the budget. Yeah? I would, I will entertain in this, for the sake of time, if you have thoughts about our environmental footprint and on any of that, you know, Mr. O'Brien serves on that working group with me, but I know other people are interested, so please send me emails, and, you know, I can bring things back to the full council as necessary, talk things over with Bob and staff. But I'll leave that one hanging out there in terms of it's in our strategic plan, and we might want to have a climate action policy or an overall environmental strategy that's in under new initiatives, and we can talk further about it when we get to the adoption phase. So I'll turn things over to you all for however brief you want to be tonight, given that we'll be back tomorrow, and, and whatever you have tonight that is, you know, is also appropriate tomorrow, you can decide where you want to go with that.
Yeah, we just want to kind of like create the stage for tomorrow night's discussion and give you kind of an overview on the financial side, how we can get there and get there without causing a lot of financial stress on everyone in the city. Want to go first, Carol?
Yes, absolutely.
You have any, anything you want to pull up on the screen?
Yeah, do you need this?
Nope.
Okay, so listen carefully.
Actually, handed out some handouts, if we can just kind of work off of those. And what this is, is exactly what the mayor said and what Bob was referring to. We just wanted to give you some ideas to incrementally come up with some viable options for new revenues, if the council chooses to try to work its way incrementally up to that 8 million dollars. And so we're going to present some ideas that are viable, as well as then what is the impact potentially on the citizens from either a user fee, or some of these are actually like taxes. So we're just going to go through some ideas. Again, we're not trying to sell this, but it's, it's viable options as we try to work our way through it. The first thing before I start out, tomorrow night, you've already gotten a copy of all of the CIP that David will be going through, and I will go through it in a little more detail tomorrow night. But the project list that he has given you, everything is balanced between 24 and 26. We currently have revenue for the sheets that you were given in Granicus. Then in addition, David is going to show you, if we were to have any incremental amount of revenue, what that would mean, what kind of streets, what kind of roadwork would we be able to get done? And that will be the decision in front of you. So we're balanced with the current revenue that we have, and we can move things around. So tonight, I'm just going to introduce this, and then you can sleep on it, and you can ask more questions tomorrow. But as the mayor had laid out in the actual PCI consultant's work, he had identified we currently are spending about 4.9 million dollars. When I talked with David, and he has been back and forth with the PCI consultant, it's not entirely the 5.5 to get us to the bare minimum. If you also include our current rate of inflation of what it's costing for contractors, and then also look at the depreciation, our annual depreciation of roads, our current deterioration rate, and some roads are deteriorating much quicker than other roads. But on an average, if you take inflation plus the deterioration, to stay the course, status quo, is that $7 million kind of a flashy number that the consultant has been talking to David about. Then in addition, if we want to try to make progress, that's where that additional million could come into play. So then, how do we get there? What Bob and I and, and David, we've had a group of staff talk about, is trying to come up with a blended combination where we can maybe pick and choose some different options that would be available to help pay for our projects. And you can see them listed there. Franchise fees, amusement taxes, home real sales tax, gas tax, hotel motel. And of course, property tax is always an option. We're not recommending that. We're kind of having it as a placeholder for what that would mean. But if you turn the page, that's where I'm actually going to go into just a little more detail. And if we have about 15 minutes, I can kind of give you a, kind of a broad background so you can be thinking about this as we go through the CIP. The first one is a proposed natural gas and electric franchise fee. And this is actually very similar. We have a cable franchise fee currently. Everybody, if you have cable on your bill, a lot of people don't notice it, but we charge a 5% franchise fee on cable TV. And the cable, the cable vendor collects it and then remits that back to us. So this would be very similar from that standpoint in that there would be a franchise fee to Mid-American for the use of our right-of-way for electric as well as natural gas to be in our right-of-way. And what that would mean is that that right-of-way would be for maintaining the streets and all the snow removal and everything else that we do around that. But it, it is a fee to allow Mid-American to use that right-of-way. And I'm going to touch on those ordinances a little bit, and, and we're going to be looking to Margaret if we want to pursue this possibility. But the ordinances have already been adopted back in 2020. And the council at that time, I don't think none of you were there at the time, but we came up with an option to generate revenue. It was, at the time, was for six-mile roads. And the council actually went through several weeks and, and months getting that adopted. We went through public hearings. And so those signed ordinances are attached, and I'm going to highlight a couple sections here in just a minute. But they're all ready to go if and when the council ever chooses to implement that. And we can go anywhere between 1% or zero up to 5%. And I'm going to show you what that, what that will generate. If we were to go with a natural gas and franchise fee, and I'm going to touch on those ordinances a little bit, that is a very steady revenue stream. It is based on actual bills that people receive. So say if we were to implement a 1% franchise fee, if, if I have a $25 bill and you have a $100, you know, bill, the one that is paying a lesser amount will pay a smaller, a smaller fee. So I would like to just touch base on the ordinances so you can read it between now and tomorrow night. And if you turn to page five first, and then I'm going to talk about revenues in a minute. But on page five is the beginning of the electric franchise fee. And if you turn to section seven, which is on page nine, I'm just going to highlight, there's an A, B, and C and some other sections under, under this. But just to throw it out, the franchise ordinance, as it has been approved, is beginning 90 days after notice from the city, the company shall remit compensation to the city monthly for the use of the public right-of-way. And if you continue to read it down there, the city has the right to impose and adjust the franchise fee throughout the term of this agreement, and that's up through 25 years. Then a little further down, the franchise fee imposed by the city shall not exceed 5%. There's a lot of detail there. But then if you skip down into B, on the collection of the fee, it says that the company, which would be Mid-American, may collect the amount of fee imposed under this section from the purchaser using or consuming the electricity with respect to which fee was imposed. The fee may be collected by the company from the purchaser as a separate stated charge on the purchaser's bill. So it most likely would be that it would be a pass-through on your utility bill.
Most assured.
Yeah. And then the last section, just to note, if we were to ever implement something like this, it would be part of our annual audit, where we would have an opportunity, we would send out confirmations that we are indeed getting the revenue collected back through us. But there's a lot of detail, and if it is an option that we decide to pursue, I would like to look to Margaret to walk us through the entire ordinance. I'm just highlighting on kind of the revenue section. Then if you turn to page 19, I think it is, you'll see there where everyone has signed the agreements, 18 and 19, for the electric. It was all back in 2000. It was never, never implemented, but it has been out there, signed and sealed. And we've already touched base with Mid-American, and they know that it's out there right now, that at any point, we could implement it. Then if you turn to page 20, that is the natural gas ordinance that has already been adopted. Again, it's almost exactly like the electric. And again, if you turn to that section seven, it's on page 23, it speaks exactly the same type of terms that it's been, right now, for 25 years, and the percentage. And then just so you know that it's there, we also have a draft resolution that Adam Simon did put together. And if the council ever chose to implement this, it is a matter of passing the resolution. Because again, the ordinance is done, the public hearings have been done. We would do a resolution to inform not only our citizens, but Mid-American. So that is one option, as we go back to that leader page. I would like to have you turn to page four, and we'll take a look at what that impact means per citizen, as well as on our businesses. It's this little yellow chart. You guys see that little grid on page, it's on page four. So if we were to implement a 1% fee, and again, this is prepared by Mid-American. These were their numbers, how they generated according to the ordinance that was written. If someone has both electric and national gas and natural gas, go across that top line for residential, that monthly fee right now on, on the existing revenue stream going through Mid-American, it would be $1.64 on a monthly bill to implement that. For our businesses, and again, residents, yes, your house could be a small house and a big house, but the bigger variance, of course, would be in our businesses, a small mom and pop shop compared to a big corporation. This, these are averages of all businesses, but it would be about $10 on a monthly basis, on an average. Some certainly would be much higher than that. If we were to go with 1%, it would generate around $615,000 estimated by Mid-American. And then incrementally, you can see the 2, 3, 4, and 5%, which would be the maximum, what potentially it could generate down the road. Any questions on that handout, for things to think about? Just a couple more highlights before we leave the natural gas. If, or the franchise fees, if we were to implement the franchise fees, this would be spread across to all properties, including our exempted properties. And so if we have, you know, the churches, and yes, it is the schools, but there are a lot of properties that, you know, we maintain the streets in front of the properties. We do all the snow removal in front of the properties. And the city doesn't get anything for those streets and snow plowing. But this would potentially, and again, you could exclude it, but right now, potentially, it would go across to all exempted properties. And the numbers that Mid-American showed you is based on utility bills for everyone. Okay? So moving on, if you have, anybody has questions on the? And again, I'm not an expert. I'm going to be looking at Margaret here at some point when we talk more about it. Another option.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Castro.
I just have one question. You said that there were public hearings on this when they passed the ordinance?
Yes.
And were there any strong feelings from residents against this at that time?
You know, Janine, maybe you can help. That would be documented in the minutes. I don't recall that there was a big...
We certainly can find out.
I was just curious.
You know, the other thing is, right, you know, so we won't pass the budget until the end of October, so, right? Even though something like this could go into place at any time. But we're looking at our overall fiscal responsibility, right? So it's fair to say, this is all information we're crunching for the future, right? So it means that we have time to do community engagement and use our Zen City community surveys, et cetera, et cetera, to establish an even better baseline of how much people want their roads fixed. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, is if we would have to have additional public hearings after, or if we were to raise it.
I don't think so, because they've already been done.
Your Honor, I would just add that this was a renewal of a prior 25-year franchise agreement. So when it came back, it wasn't like it was a brand-new thing, and it didn't really call out the ability to pass along a franchise fee. It was just that franchise agreement between the city and Madam.
Okay, so it was a renewal. That's really helpful. That's really helpful information for all of us. Thank you. Mr. Monsys.
Thank you. Why was it not put in place? Was it just because of COVID or because we had to wait till the next year?
I'm sorry, why wasn't it?
Why wasn't it implemented?
You know, that's thing, we'd have to look back through the minutes as well. COVID absolutely was a big part of it. It, you know, that just rapidly came upon us in in 2020, and our whole shift of everything changed. So we balanced the budget at a very marginal amount to get by in a reactionary standpoint on COVID. And then we just never brought it up again. And so here we are now, looking at infrastructure again.
I'll pull those minutes and send them out.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you. Thanks for asking the question.
Please continue. Another option to consider. Again, we were looking at viable options that could kind of relate to streets a little bit, so like the right of way for the franchise fee. The amusement tax is a tax that we currently use. We are only implementing this in regards to the vibrant at the mark right now, but we get a lot of outside tourists that come in, they drive our roads. And the amusement tax is currently 5%. All the money goes to the mark. The city does not keep any amount. As a home rule city, we can establish, if you were to move forward, any amount, any percentage. But if you were to choose 5%, like give half of it to the mark, half of it the city would keep, that would generate about $540,000. If you look on the next page, historically, it's been somewhat stable. We had a big year in 19. I really can't tell you what happened there. But then we hit COVID and we basically shut down. And now this year, this last year, they just went gangbusters. And that's what that 540,000 is. And it would be taxing not just some of our citizens, obviously go to those events, but we'd have a lot of Iowa people coming over that would help share in that cost that if we were to do that, help with our CIP.
Just a word of caution on the amusement tax. This was 2022 was the biggest year in the 30-year history of the arena in terms of its net profitability. They literally hit the $2 million mark for the first time in 30 years. And a lot of that had to do with the fact that after COVID, many of the artists had been pent up, wanted to come out. So there was a lot of concerts, a lot more concerts than you would normally see happening over there or events. So I don't expect we're going to see another $2 million year over at the mark, but we will see it come back down to where it normally was. So just sharing the the board's sentiments from the from the arena.
Thank you. It is a variable amount. Any given year, that can change. Home rule sales tax is another option we could consider raising. That one historically, if you look on home rule, that is much more stable that when we look at a 10-year history, does not fluctuate so much up and down. And I had on here 0.05%. Ignore that because as we looked at the state better, you can only do it in quarter percent increments, and that's state mandated. So a quarter percent would raise us from 1.25% up to 1.5%. Again, it's just an option, but it would generate about $1.8 million. And we certainly could allocate that additional amount 100% towards CIP. Currently, it is split, the one the one and a quarter currently is split 40% general fund, 60% CIP. If we gave all the new to the CIP, that would, the breakout then would be 33% to the general, 67% to the CIP. Again, an option. The next one is the gasoline tax. Again, take a look at the 10-year history on this, you'll see it's actually declining. And we haven't done in-depth research, that's why that's happening, although you hear about a lot of times people are crossing over into Iowa because the gas tax is cheaper there or the not tax, the actual gas is cheaper. In addition, we'll probably see this moving down because of electric vehicles, because more and more people start using electric vehicles. So that's an option. 1% would generate about 67,000. It's not a lot of money. Rock Island currently has a 5% gas tax. We are at 1%. Just to kind of gauge the, you know, but that's that's an option. Then another option would be hotel motel tax, which is a use tax currently in the city. Again, take a look at the hotel motel tax, the Henry 10-year history. Again, that's been a very steady revenue stream, except for when COVID hit in 20 and then 21. You'll see it really dipped down and then it was coming back. Again, that is one where you get out a lot of outside tourists and people or like the Rad Bri and things, you know, coming through or or the Bix, you know, we get a lot of people from the Iowa side as well coming through or tur, you know, tournaments that come through. So it wouldn't just be on our citizens, it would be kind of a combination.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Outdoor.
I think hotel and motel tax, it can be increased from one more than one person because it will not tax the citizen, it will tax the people of various sections who will come to the city.
However, anytime you imbalance things between Illinois and Iowa, you run into problems. So I wouldn't discourage final thoughts on any of these options until we have all the information.
Okay, thank you.
One thing about the hotel motel tax, Iowa currently is capped at 7%. We are also currently at 7%. So if we went up a 1%, it would generate 265,000, but we would be at 8% as opposed to 7%. So some things to think about there.
Rock Island is at 7% and East Moline is at 5%.
Okay.
To that point, thank you, Your Honor. Rock Island Selts tax is 1.25, East Moline is 0.5 because they're not home rule.
Yes.
And I'm just throwing the data out there.
Uh huh.
Do with it what you will.
Yeah. No, that's exactly right.
Buy everything in East Moline.
Yes. Sure, Brian.
Excuse me. I've forgotten. These gaming machines, what what do they fall under?
That is.
It's all state regulation or no?
We can't do anything. I mean, if people want to give their money away, we should probably get some of it.
Ms. Kostopoulos.
So that is by state statute.
That's what I was just going to say.
Yeah.
Nothing we can do?
No.
But we're home rule.
We're allowed to, we already did that.
Yeah.
Well, we already allowed them to go to six machines. That was one thing we could do, and we already did that. Yes.
So we're not getting any tax money from?
Oh, we are getting a lot.
Okay.
I, I.
We're already getting it. We can't just automatically up it because it's state.
I have to pull the line item because there's a video video gaming tax in a combination with the licensing fee, and I think the combination is between 300 and 400,000 for those.
Yeah. Ms. Murphy?
What about the cannabis tax? I don't know where that's going to go.
Right now, we have some toward entertainment for our 151, and then there's a program in the works that will be presented to council that's focused on economic opportunity. I think the premise from us, please correct me if I'm wrong, was to not designate cannabis tax dollars to anything that we are must haves, right? That we don't want to depend on cannabis tax dollars. We want to use that for the the cream on the top of everything.
Particularly when we don't know what it's going to be.
Exactly. We don't know what it'll be.
We're guessing at what it's going to be. So we assigned it to things that aren't must. We don't want to put that money toward roads because it could go away or not meet expectations.
But what if it exceeds expectations, like we have two dispensaries.
Correct. But the more dispensaries you have, the more you dilute the pool of people potentially, right? So we don't know how it's going to shake out. So so the current thinking has been let it go to things that we're not counting on in like like CIP.
Just a side note, I was just out in Colorado when I was in this mountain town. I mean, there's nothing up there. There's a dispensary on one end of town, dispensary on the other end of town, and they must be staying in business, so.
That's what I'm thinking. Roads are a loss.
Mr. Schmidt?
First, I think once that becomes a steady stream and a more predictable stream, simply considering it part of our regular revenue would be more appropriate. I think right now, it's a question mark because we also don't know when they're going to open, how, so there's a lot of factors that make that.
The other, the other thing was, the predictive number was not like in the millions. It was like 300,000 or 350. It's not as much as you think, actually. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Your Honor.
I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
But that does come back to a larger point, too, that I want to think about as, two things as we think about all of these taxes. One is that anything that is going to strike regressively and hurt people with a lower income more is going to be pretty much a nonstarter for me. I I appreciate all the things we're looking at, and I think there's also a difficult conversation because some of those more regressive taxes are also the biggest opportunities to reach non-Molineers, and I recognize that piece, too. But I think that that is something that I'm going to be fairly firm on. The other is that as we think about, you know, raising fees and designating to funds and this and that, and this cannabis is one example where I've not raised a stick, but designating something in that way really only leads to a couple of things. Either it causes you to play a shell game because that money got devoted to roads, so we spend our road money doing something else, right? We used to give a million from the general fund, now we only give 700,000 because that 300 came from somewhere. To my mind, thinking of it that way just sets us up for failure, either because of that or because we look and say, well, we're supposed to be paying with that from this special fund, and if it didn't perform, we're not going to fill it in. So I think having those conversations about dedicating those monies is dangerous and not the way we should be thinking about it overall. We should be thinking about raising that revenue to meet our budgetary goals as opposed to trying to create these lines that don't really exist, except in our minds. Or worse, we could legislate them.
Mr. Timmy?
Just a little bit about the cannabis funds. I think Alderman Monsias has pointed out before that this revenue stream is temporary. If there ever is a federal legalization, the dispensaries could open everywhere, and then all this money we have will just diminish. Because you could go to Iowa, you could go to Rock Island, there's all sorts of things. So viewing this as a temporary windfall is probably the best use instead of designating it for these things. I see Alderman Schmidt's point, though, about how money's money, right? But for the time being, I'm not.
And also, we shouldn't get, I really appreciate sort of the attention to detail and what is stable and variable, what is hybrid options in a sense. No one wants to talk about raising anything, but we can't have our heads in the sand. We have to know what the information is. That's why I asked them to prep us. And also, we will talk about where are there any places to cut back, right? I mean, we have to have a balanced conversation about this.
Absolutely.
So I don't want anybody to think we're not getting to that point at some point, right? Or thinking about where our ARPA dollars are at, or, you know, they're designated, but what do we need to open that box up somehow to reshuffle things? So.
In the interest of time, if you want to take us further through. Just one last page for something to think about. Look at the very last page. And if we take a look at 2023, the very first part of the the first green line there for 2023, you will see there are the monthly fee increases that is currently adopted in our current budget. As you recall, the existing Alderman here, we had a stormwater increase in our stormwater fees as well as in sanitation. As part of that, we looked long term, clear out to 25. Those numbers weren't adopted, but the plan is built in for improvements that are needed for water, improvements that are needed for WPC. We will be coming back with that and hoping the council will adopt going forward for those types of projects that are needing, maybe having to be done. Just for an example, we added in, what if we raised that franchise fee at a 1% level? Again, pulled from that chart earlier. For 23, just say for the 90 days, you could implement it as soon as October 1. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just using examples. If you were to do that, it's $1.64 a month. And so for the year 23, the fees for the last part of the year would be about $3.42 in combination with the stormwater and sanitation. And then on an annual basis for that entire year of 23 that we're in, it would be about $26.28. As we move into 24, again, these were the fees that were presented to council during last year's budget. There's a more significant increase in WPC for the construction of South Slope. It's a 9% increase, and we've got a 9% increase the following year for water. You can see there on a monthly basis, this would be on top of the 3.42. In 24, it would be up to 7.16 if you were to implement an additional 1% of the franchise. So 1% this year, another 1%. It's just an example, incrementally up to the 5%, which would give us $3 million in CIP, one option. But anyways, you can see there what those costs are, because I don't want to hide those. We're going to be talking about them in depth during the budget, and these are a lot of decisions, and they're hard decisions to work through.
So that was, you know, the continuing council members knew that that fee situation was coming. We also learned from you that about the basically surplus we have this year, but I don't think we've, I don't know if it's in here, what you mentioned that we now, you got the report on, if you could explain that briefly.
Yeah. Well, as you know, we ended last year in the black, and as we looked at the three-year budget, trying to get the general fund back to the 25% level, which really puts us in a good situation as we enter the budget, we have an excess of 1.7 million. But we do have some budget impacts that we know that are coming forward. Number one, potentially the rental housing. But one of the bigger ones is we were notified from the state of Illinois that our police and fire pension numbers, based on we, we crossed over all of our pension assets to the state. That was a mandatory provision. And as you know, some of the interest rates, the markets kind of failed last year, and then just with the conversion of the state pooling all of the pension funds, their actuary came up with that we are going to need an additional $1.4 million next year. And that's ongoing. It never really goes back. Once they say we need 1.4, it's going to be 1.4 every year. So we've got a lot of things to work through. But we've, we've also got some revenues that are coming in stronger just based on last year. So as we head into the operating budgets in October, you'll you'll care about this. But I'm still hoping that we will have some excess money that the council can put for a one-time project or a one-time.
There's a lot of competing interests for a very limited pool of resources. I'm just going to lay it out there.
Yes.
I don't want anybody to have any misconception that we're walking into this budget season with, you know, resources like we did over the last couple of years. So you're going to have to make some tough choices, and we're going to have to prioritize a lot of these major capital expenditures. You know, the goal is to keep up with our road infrastructure. If it's infrastructure, that is the community's number one pillar. And, you know, I've seen the challenge that's coming. It's like a wave. And when it gets here, you're going to know because you're going to, we're going to lay it out for you, and you can see all the competing interests. A lot of them are inside the ARPA funding. That is going to, again, get reallocated. We do that every year, but as we move past that, you know, what we're talking about, you know, all the utility fees, that was the result of a rate study that was done professionally. So these are not numbers that were created in-house, they're created based upon a very careful analysis by our consultants at the time, no different than the PCI. So we know where we're at today, and basically, we're paying back the present, you know, paying back the past to fund the present because nobody increased those fees. They sat there for years.
Yeah, that was how many years? 17 years or something that the fees were not addressed?
Stormwater, there was nothing.
It's different in different funds, but in the stormwater especially, it was 17 years. And then there's some gaps of five, six, seven years. And what we're going to be recommending, and you'll see, is some incremental, ongoing, trying to keep pace with our cost of labor, which brings up another point in the operating, another issue is the implementation of the Evergreen Study for all of the city staff when we were talking about.
I'll be bringing, I'm gonna be bringing that back with Leah very, very shortly. We're very close to bringing that back to you and, and, and a recommendation for implementation. Then it'll be up to council to make that choice.
So in essence, we're, you're gonna be faced with lots of decisions related to fixing the deferred maintenance problem we've had, right? And then also trying to get, I mean, to get into the vision, the exponential thinking, but trying to get there incrementally. So on that happy note, does anyone have any other thoughts this evening? There's plenty to read. We'll make sure you have my little thing with the, some of the links set up there. And then we'll be back tomorrow for details on infrastructure.
Correct. And then after that, we will make ourselves available to each and every one of you. Whenever you have a need, get questions answered, or you want to sit down and understand something. You know, that's what we're here for. And we would take the time out of the crazy schedules we have to set those meetings up. So that way you feel comfortable, as I told you, when you got elected, comfortable making those tough choices that you're gonna have to make. Alls we do is recommend you have to set ours.
All right. Great. So we'll conclude our roundtable this evening. Ms. Laney's business, I don't have any this evening. Ms. Murphy? Ms. Macias?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Ms. Rosak?
No.
Timian?
No, Your Honor.
Finch?
No, Your Honor.
O'Brien?
See you tomorrow night.
Castro?
No, Your Honor.
Schmidt?
Very quickly, I just want to extend, I just want to extend then my thanks to Janine for her service as our clerk and her service this evening.
Yes.
As she continues and completes that transition. Thank you, Janine.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. Mr. Vitas?
It's hard to follow that, so I'll just have to, and move on.
Okay. Any public comment this evening? We have no executive session. Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, that's Schmidt and Macias. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.